This time, this time. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting at the Chaska Events Center. We'll call the meeting to for Monday, June 21st, 2021. Call the meeting to order at 7:02. Will you please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, and welcome, everyone. There's something here we got to read. Welcome, everyone. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we are holding our media meeting via City Council has declared a local emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic. State statute allows us to hold our meetings remotely. If you have joined the meeting on Zoom, you will notice that you are muted. We have a moderator on the call who will unmute those who wish to speak during the public comment parts of the meeting. Public comments will be reserved for visitor presentation, public hearings, special circumstances determined by the council. Once we reach those parts of the agenda, I will ask if there are any public comments. If you wish to speak and have joined a meeting by computer or tablet, please click on the raise your hand icon. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Once your hand is raised, the moderator will announce your name or phone number and unmute your line. Public comment is provided at the discretion of the council and is meant to provide productive discourse of topics related to the city of Chaska. Speakers shall refrain from comment or behavior that is deemed disorderly, derogatory, obscene, indecent, or off-topic. Any person engaging in such speech or action may be muted or removed from the meeting. If you are watching online or cable or Comcast Channel 15, please be aware of the following. Council members, city staff, and presenters may be participating in the meeting remotely, and there is a delay between the live meeting and online and cable broadcast. Thank you. And you know what we're going to do with this? Because this is our last meeting here? For that speech. All right.
One thing I will point out, even though we're going back to council chambers for public, we're going to keep Zoom option open so that people can still be able to remote in, which I think we'll just continue to do going into the future. People have really had positive feedback with it, so.
You did say that we're going back to live.
Yep.
July, what is that? Meeting in July?
Sixth.
July 6th. Okay. All right, Nate, we call roll.
Yes. July, it wasn't July 6th, it's July 12th.
Wonderful misinformation. It's wonderful.
To me either.
Contradict you, sir.
After a great start.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we try this again. Nate, can you call roll, please?
My pleasure. Councilmember Hatfield, Councilmember Hubbard, Councilmember Wong, Councilmember Grau, Mayor Windschittle.
Here. Get through it, huh?
I almost said McHatfield there. I wanted to like put your first and last name.
Anyway, all right. Next is item four, adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions to the agenda. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion?
Motion by Hubbard. Yeah.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to adopt the agenda discussion. During the team, none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. What carries? All right, tonight we have a proclamation that I would like to read here. Toughest things to do as mayor, proclamations. Ms. Nancy, would you like to come on up here? You can stand by my little white table, and I'll read this to you, and then I'll come over and present this to you. Proclamation in recognition of Nancy Whitman Belts, Jonathan Elementary Principal, and I heard you go by WB. Is that right?
It's true.
Okay. All right. Whereas Nancy Whitman Belts, after being an educator for 46 years and a principal in Eastern Carver County Schools for 26 years, is retiring on June 30th, 2021, and Ms. Whitman Belts has served as Jonathan Elementary Principal since taking the position in 1998, making her only one of two principals since the school opened in 1991. And whereas throughout her tenure, has made it a point to know all 600 students by name each year and take the time to develop those important relationships with family. Six hundred? I could hardly remember these five.
There's four of us.
Whereas, this has made her an excellent example to colleagues and teachers alike, inspiring them with their advocacy for best interests of students. And whereas, on Ms. Whitman Belts' retirement, she can be proud of the tremendous impact she has had, for her legacy will continue to resonate not only within the walls of the school, but also within the minds of students, parents, teachers, and alumni throughout our city. And whereas, Ms. Whitman Belts' advice for future principals is one that comes from the heart. Believe in every kid. Hang with them. Don't ever give up on anyone. And that goes for the adults, too. Believe in them. Listen to them. Love them. And whereas, the Chaska City Council wishes to express the appreciation of all Chaska residents for her enduring service and leadership to Jonathan Elementary and wishes her continued success and happiness throughout her retirement. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Chaska does hereby proclaim June 30th, 2021, as Nancy Whitman Belts' Day in Chaska. In witness whereof, I have set my hand in the seal of the city of Chaska this 21st day of June in the year of our Lord 2021.
Congratulations.
I'd be retired, mate.
Thank you.
Sure. Turn this around. Okay. Not enough here, too?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say?
Thank you. I'll just say, just thank you for your kind words and for the proclamation and for letting me be here tonight. Appreciate that. Forty-six years in a profession that I truly have loved and I'm so passionate about. And 26 of those years I've been in Eastern Carver County and the last 23 years at Jonathan Elementary. And I am so thankful for working with just all the kids and all the staff and our whole learning community involving the parents and all the support. And I just want to say thanks, too, for partnering with us, the city of Chaska, and all the partnerships we've had over the years. And I know you will continue to support all the youth in our community. And it's just been a great journey. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome and deserve it. I think Mike wanted to say a few things.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You know, I've been fortunate to have, you know, two children, you know, go through Jonathan. And, you know, I have to say that, you know, you very much to those words, you practice what you preach. You love all the children. You devote so much attention and love to all those kids, to each and every one of them. And you go out of your way to try to really make this an inclusive, loving, such a thoughtful environment for all the students there. And I have to say thank you to for all that you've done. And it's such a such a privilege to be able to have both a dedicated and gifted individual yourself to be a principal there. And I very much appreciate that you've spent as much time and given as much of yourself to all these children. Well, thank you.
Thank you for entrusting your kids with with us, too. So I'm going to miss it. So July 1, I'm going to figure it out. Yes.
At Chaska Elementary, it's been driving me nuts. I swear you were my principal or vice principal when I was at Chaska.
I was the principal when I first came to Eastern Carver County Schools, Chaska Elementary, for three years.
Okay, good.
Your name is, your name is very familiar, and you looked familiar. So, yes.
She has a lot of problems.
Still does. She hasn't changed a bit.
My sister and I would fight on the bus, and then we'd have to go.
I was at Chaska Elementary for three years.
Okay.
And I went to Jonathan. Dickie was the first principal at Jonathan. And then he retired in fall or spring of 98, and then I went there. So, yep.
Okay, because it's driving me nuts. I'm like, I swear she was at Chaska. Okay.
It's been great.
Did you?
Yeah, I, you know, my youngest son, Lincoln, is special needs and has a tough time fitting in in places. I just, I can't even put into words how appreciative my family was of what, what Ms. WB, as Lincoln calls, calls you, just how special he felt every day he came into class. And I, one time in particular, I remember you had him dressed up in a suit, and he had my name tag on from work. And he's dressed up like Dad at work, and she took a picture in her office and sent it. And it's just, it's, it just really feels good to parent when you have a child that, you know, doesn't necessarily fit in places to be loved like that. And it was absolutely the most special, special thing that we could have ever been given as a gift. And I just, I can't tell you how much we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I still had, just took the picture down. I have to clean out my office, and I just took that picture down. But it's in my memory book for sure. So, and all the kids have been such a gift to myself as well. And I always say, you know, we're so busy trying to teach the children, but really the children are teaching us. And we can learn so much from them. So, and I have. So, I'll never forget that. So.
I will just say that I've, everyone I talk to always says nothing but great things to say about you. So, like I said in the proclamation, you do live by what you talk about. So that's, that's important. So, thank you. And I don't know, anyone else have anything?
Yeah, everything I was already said, but I'll just say thank you. Thank you.
And I live in this community. It's a great community. So I'll still continue to be a supporter of all the great things that are happening here as well. So.
All of the groups will be looking for you to volunteer to do something. So don't worry. It won't take long.
That's all right. You're looking for things to do in July, I'm sure.
They'll be knocking on your door.
I have a commissioner opening someday, too.
Thank you so much. So.
All right. Thank you. I would never torture you and make you stay at this whole meeting. So you're more than welcome to get up and. But if you want to stay, you're more than welcome. All right. With that, we're going to move into visitor presentation. And we are going to have Chief Ryan Seibert give his 2020 annual report. So Chief.
Mayor, council members. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and discuss our 2020 annual report. And I promise I'll keep my comments brief. But of course, if you need any clarification, or if you have any questions, feel free to to jump in, and I'll get things clarified. So in chronological order, on page three, there's just a few things that I wanted to mention. And I know it goes without being said, but obviously 2020 was a very unique year with COVID pandemic, and then also obviously calls for police reform and civil unrest. So I think perhaps one of the most important pieces of content, at least to me, is in this chief's message and just recognizing the professionalism of our staff and the respect that I have for our staff in their perseverance last year. And just a few extra things I wanted to mention. Our patrol staff did switch to 12-hour emergency scheduling during the pandemic, which obviously has personal ramifications in their private lives and their family lives. We also did establish what I would call a bullpen of our staff, and that was everybody from command staff to investigators to school resource officers. And the whole point of that was looking at it through the lens of continuity of service. If indeed we started seeing patrol officers becoming ill or having to quarantine. Also, like many other components of city staff, we had to adapt to different work environments, whether that was remote work environments, or also, too, there are plenty of operational adaptation that was needed. But we never lost the perseverance when it comes to terms of what type of service we were providing to the community. And also with mandatory overtime and other expectations on our staff, at least in my judgment, they performed admirably. So I thank them. Moving on to page four, I know I had the opportunity to speak to you previously regarding our community conversations. And also, I've spoken to the Human Rights Commission. But obviously, the information contained in there in summary form, I also feel is critical, hence the reason why it was put into the annual report summary. So if you recall, our community conversations took the form of an in-person event here at the Event Center. We also had one that was conducted via Zoom, and then also a mass mailing. So I did my best to establish six key themes based on that feedback. In no particular order, the priorities of the community, number one, community engagement was definitely a reoccurring pillar or theme that we saw described both as a continuation of the robust engagement already performed by the city. For their engagement programs, especially those directed towards local youth. So a few updates I'd also like to provide. We are going to have a community picnic in July. And we hope for a very good turnout. And we're doing that in partnership with a few other entities. We're also revitalizing our bike patrol unit, which hopefully will be up and running in the weeks to come, which I hope will be another positive piece of engagement and way for our officers to interact, especially with youths in the community. As well as what I think oftentimes goes overlooked is just the everyday casual encounters that our staff have with members of the public, and through their words, their professionalism in their actions. I think that is one of the strongest forms of community engagement that a police department can participate in. Number two, safety was also obviously another very important theme, which I don't think needs elaboration, but definitely another pillar. Third was customer service and staffing. Taking a look at making sure that we're hiring the best possible candidates for any future openings with an obvious emphasis on people, bringing people in from diverse backgrounds, and recognizing the value in potential officers with bilingual abilities. So in response to that, we have recently formed a recruitment committee within the police department to hopefully establish some new ideas and different tools and ways that we can market the police department. And then also still existing at the staff level currently, we have a number of programs and initiatives that I think will be our recruitment effort in the future. Effective transparency was a fourth theme that was definitely very prevalent as part of the feedback. And this referred to a commitment to increased data sharing, annual department reports, social media outreach, you know, the things that really come to mind when it comes to that data sharing and transparency. So a lot of this continues to remain in process as we speak. But I think some of our outreach programs, like Coffee with a Cop, and some of the other types of community forums that our department regularly holds, is a great way for the community to get to know us and increase that kind of one-on-one communication and transparency. But another will be on our website. And I'm hoping, again, some of this is still at the staff level. But when it comes to sharing use of force information, when it comes to sharing crime analysis and data, I'm hoping we can start to get more real-time information on our website. Another officer training was highlighted as a key area. And this is an area, too, that ties into the last one. But we are constantly reviewing and adapting as a police department when it comes to our training methodology. And again, some of this is in existence now. Some is still progressing at the staff level. But we've definitely made significant progress in the area of crisis intervention training, bringing more realistic scenario-based training, and also looking at different facilities to hold training. And then lastly, on number six, I think it kind of circles back to the whole necessity and point of the community conversation is that adaptation and review, I don't know if that's me causing that static, but the adaptation and review definitely is always shaped and molded from the conversations that we've had previously. And also, our mission statement and core values guide all of our decision-making. So fast forward to page eight. Just a few things on the Patrol Division. Obviously, they're the most visible element of the police department, given that they're in a Mark squad car. It's also the most staff within our agency. But it is important, on top of responding to calls for service and being proactive in the community, the Patrol Division does take part in a good deal of our community engagement throughout the year. And again, some of the most important that they do daily is just those one-on-one encounters with members of the public. I listed a few examples on there, some special events. But again, it's really those informal, spontaneous encounters where I think it speaks volumes for engagement. From a training standpoint, the department did log almost 1,000 hours of training last year despite being in a COVID environment. So some of that was switched to, you know, hybrid models, and some of it was online as well. So definitely looking forward to a resumption of normal police training. Page nine, a few things on the Investigative Division. About 817 cases were reviewed by supervisory staff in the Investigations Unit last year, and 384 of those were assigned for investigative follow-up. And that can truly be any type of investigation case, from an assault to a theft. The sky's the limit on that. They're truly generalists in their roles. And then of those cases, just over 150 were submitted for criminal charging to the county attorney. And nearly 91% of those were formally charged with, which I do believe speaks volume to the the work product and the dedication of our investigative staff.
Just point out, over the years, that's been a big difference maker in Chaska Police is, you know, I've seen it presented as like crime clearance rates, and then also what percent of of charges are submitted actually get formally charged by the prosecutor. You know, there's a high standard that they have of actually making a case where they'll take the investigation and say, yes, there's enough, there's enough here, here to be able to to actually take this forward. 91% is a really high percent of of cases that are actually submitted that actually get charged.
Like the norm, or what's the median?
It's so variable, from, you know, one county attorney's office, you know, based on some larger departments, different units. But I would just ballpark figure 91% is quite high.
Hey, when the crime clearance rates, when we looked at that, the average was in the mid 50% for agencies sort of around the state. I think we were in the mid 70s percent. So that's the ones that have actually been charged and actually been brought forward to an actual conviction.
Fast forward to page 12. There's a few things I wanted to mention on community partnership. And I could discuss community partnerships all day long, whether it's with, you know, involving Officer Jenke or any of our staff in the Patrol Division. But I think, you know, on top of the operational challenges and changes that we had to make, community engagement was extremely affected by COVID last year, just with the inability to meet with people and hold our traditional functions, which what come to mind is the Citizens Academy, night to you night, safety camp. I mean, none of those things were possible last year. But I am very impressed. And this has been a combination of police department staff, city staff, and stakeholders in our community, is what was done to fill that void and meet the need in our community. So a few things I pulled out was the assistance with mass collection and donation events was significant in the community, and getting out and distributing those to those that are in need. Meals for seniors, especially over holidays, was absolutely critical. Birthday patrols, car parades in partnership with the fire department, I think was critical to bring some joy to the youth in the community. Food distributions, multiple distributions occurred and served almost 6,000 families in our community in the immediate area. Great assistance regarding COVID-19 testing to some of those that maybe did not have the means or the ability to do that at other locations. Santa parade, Coffee with a Cop, all of these things I think have really helped fill that void that we saw last year. And then also, a new program called Lights On, which you may or may not be aware of, but this is a micro grant program that our department started to participate in last year. And if an officer were to stop a vehicle for an equipment violation, such as a burned-out headlight, taillight, instead of giving somebody a fix-it ticket or giving somebody a citation for that, it enables them, by way of a voucher that the officer gives to the driver, they can take that voucher to a participating location to have it fixed at no cost to the driver.
Better be careful. The new headlights are $3,000.
Vouchers would be good for that. These are your standard.
Just know that that's the, some of the new LED headlights and taillights are $2,000 and $3,000 replacements.
That's why people don't fix them.
They get pulled over.
Page 13, calls for service slightly reduced, probably the most significant factor in 2020, when the world started to lock down, people were working at home. I just, I think that's a direct reflection of much less vehicle traffic. And people essentially, lack for better term, out and about. So we did see a reduction in overall calls for service. Crime stat information on pages 14 and 15, unless you have specific questions, I'll glaze over it. But I think this directly reflects the fact that Chaska remains one of the top 20 safest communities in the state, which in part, crime stat data is trolled when that information is determined and those assessments made. Part one, crime stats on page 14, those generally refer to more serious offenses as they're classified by uniformed reporting system. And part two, on page 15, these are less serious crimes, again, through that uniform crime reporting. Use of force data, and this is on pages 16 and 17. And it's important to note that this was an identified area of data transparency and interest as part of the community. And it is my intention that probably quarterly throughout each year, we will release this information and post it on our website. So it doesn't come as a information dump in a, you know, an annual or a three-year compilation like this. So this will get shared with the public more frequently. But what I think is most important to note is that anytime force is used by a member of our staff, they are required to report that in an incident report. In the incident report, on top of other things, it's required to note the type of force that was used, and also each particular force instance that's used. So for instance, on a particular incident, if multiple uses of force occur, each one of those has to be documented, which you'll see on page 17 with the statistical breakdown. And I'll just focus on the year 2020, for example, in the far right column. There were approximately 11,500 calls for service, 36 total force incidents. So that would be one particular incident. So 36 times force was used, which reflects a 0.3% of the time. And of those 36 total incidents, 69 force actions were initiated. And then I did a breakdown from there of the types of force that were used over a three-year period from 2018 to 2020 to try to give a historical perspective of the type of force that is used by the Chaska Police Department. And of those, on the very top, you know, it's verbal commands, which might not seem like a particular use of force. But again, when it does get reported, that's an example of, you know, multiple uses of force. So 96 times verbal commands were issued in that three-year period under a force incident. So I promised Matt I would be brief tonight in my comments, but I obviously want to leave any time for questions if you have them.
Questions for the chief?
Question. First, I just want to thank you and thank all the members of the department for, you know, all the work you do day in and day out. I know it's a, it's a, it's a difficult job, and sometimes a very thankless job, too. But you guys do an amazing job here in our community. I was wondering, like, looking at the stats, are there any trends or areas that you see of concern that you would want to watch out for, spend more attention on in the future? And along with that, what are some of the, what were some of the things you would look at in terms of doing to address some of those concern areas?
Definitely. I mean, it's part of our strategic planning and direction for the department. In terms of particular trends, I know across the metro, there's been a spike in certain types of violent crime that keeps getting mentioned in the news media. We've been fortunate not to have seen a rise in violent crime in our area. But the one reoccurring theme, and I think any of us, when we're out in our vehicles or out walking, what does concern me is just the disregard for traffic law in the community, whether that's speeding, stoplights, stop signs. I think that that's a general concern that I have heard raised by members of the public. And then also, property crime certainly is a concern. I think we've seen the rise in certain types of theft trends and damage to property, whether that's cataly- I think we've seen the rise in certain types of theft trends and damage to property, whether that's catalytic converters or other things on vehicles, property damage to public facilities, whether that's graffiti on water towers, damage at our parks. But fortunately, we just haven't seen the trends in the violent crime. But, you know, to address that, that'll be part of our strategic planning, which, you know, obviously is still occurring now at the staff level. But taking a look at, you know, are there different areas of focus where we need to be more proactive? So that certainly is always ongoing.
I just had a quick question. I appreciate the thoroughness of information. And wondering, is this something that would be posted and available on the website or is it currently?
It will be. My plan is to probably get this posted tomorrow or as soon as staff can get it online for me. But I just wanted to have the opportunity to discuss it here before we posted it publicly.
A clarifying question, and maybe I listen too much and maybe it's not an issue. But I've heard like some cities, in particular with carjackings being raised, would that be on your hair, like motor vehicle theft? Like, I don't see a specific carjacking classification. And is that true? Have we seen arise a kind of that kind of offense? Maybe not here in Chaska, but just in, in kind of the greater metro areas?
In, in the metro area, yes, there definitely has been an increase in the trends of motor vehicle theft. Carjacking, you know, I think sometimes is a term that gets used loosely.
Like, what's the, what you refer to it because yeah, that's what we hear, right?
Carjacking to me is more of a robbery. So what that would be is if somebody is already inside of their vehicle and somebody through force removes that person or otherwise takes the vehicle. To me, that would be a carjacking. That's, that would be rare in our area. There certainly has been an increase in certain parts of the metro with carjackings. The other flip side of it would be a motor vehicle theft. And that would be a case where maybe somebody left the keys in the car or through some other means, vigil, feel it, which would be classified as simply as a motor vehicle theft. We may have seen a slight statistical increase, but nothing really discernible. I mean, there can be some anomalies from year to year, but certainly metrowide, that's become much more prevalent. In terms of the data, it's, so the UCR data and the classifications, they kind of get, sometimes get lumped generically because they take on what's called a NIBR's code, which I'll spare you from all the details. But they get classified in different areas. So for instance, it'd be motor vehicle theft is where you would see the occurrences of just thefts. And then it would probably get coded as a robbery. If it was the, the carjacking type issue.
Right. I, I just want to say, looking at your total force actions over the three-year period, you know, you got zero, zero pepper sprayed, zero baton use, zero strike used, zero pepper ball, and more importantly firearm use zero. And only firearm displays five. So I, I think that that says something about out here that people have to feel good about seeing what the current trends are across the metro. Those are important and I think that that's a, that's a strong message. Trying to show what's happening out here and that our police force aren't like, people seem to think that police forces are. So I'm very happy to see that. Thanks to all of our force and, and your leadership through this process. So thank you. Early into it, so you can't take all the credit, but.
Oh, I took that. So I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Truly, she's probably going to be mad at me for saying this, but Detective Tracy Perlich, who was in the room tonight, will be retiring after 29 years with our police department, and that's going to take place next week. And Tracy is just one of those examples of, of the staff and their hard work and their dedication. It's, it's not me. It's their collective actions that speak volumes.
You gonna come up and speak? What do you mean?
You know, I have to, can I, can I make a, can I make a comment about Officer Tracy? When I was 16 or 17 years old, I had my tires slashed and I was threatened pretty intensely by another individual. And Officer Tracy was so helpful. I mean, even walked me to my car. It's just, you know, when she was a school resource officer. So I do really appreciate you being here still. And congrats on your retirement.
So, so this is your last one you'll have to sit through meetings? So you want us to go to midnight tonight?
I was gonna say, let's make it as long as possible.
Neither do I. So we'll make it. We'll try to do better. Well, congratulations. Appreciate that. Chief, thank you for your report. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work. And hopefully these stay about the same and go to keep going down the other ones. So thank you. All right. Do we have anybody else from visitor presentation? Kevin?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay. All right. So that's all I have on the visitor presentation. Next, we'll go and approve the June 7th meetings. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
No moves.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield. Second by Councilmember Hubbard to approve June 7th city council meeting minutes discussion. Hearing seen not all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post save sign. Motion carries 5-0. All right, moves us to eight consent items. We have a bunch of them tonight. Again, if there are, these are items that need our approval, but not necessarily a conversation, but anything can be pulled forward to talk about with that. Is there anyone that has a conversation about anything or a comment?
I answered my question about the amount of money, but.
Oh, for the relief, it's not, you know, I say it's approximately 3 million. They still haven't given us the exact amount yet, but it's about that. So.
Here's a clarifying question on first, yeah, I guess it's a question. 8H, removal of commissioner terms. So familiar with that individual, actually served with that individual. Don't need to go in the details of what's going on. I just want to make sure, like, I, I don't want to make assumptions, and I think we do this, but we reached out, tried to understand what was going on. Just wasn't able to make it. Did he, do we have a connection or just, just, or do we?
I know Marshall, Marshall talked to him as well as Mary, Mary did too, so.
So conversation was had versus, okay, okay, understood. I like I said, I just, I know we've, that has always been in the by rules and kind of things. And I think at times circumstance dictates needing to do that. So does that mean an alternate? There's already an alternate?
Yeah, we, we're okay for the rest of this year that we will be able to have enough people to fill out the remainder of this year and then we'll deal with it at the normal time next January.
I, I was gonna bring that up as well, and it just, and, and, you know, it's, we don't, we rarely ever terminate a commissioner term, but it was just lack of attendance. And I just want to be clear that that's, that was the reason, which are clearly stated, if you miss so many meetings and then you're contacted and so, and Marshall went through all the proper techniques. But I, I just, you hate to see that in there and not have a conversation about it. So I wanted to touch, touch on that, on a little bit of that too. So. And I do want to thank him for his time. He had been on. I know, I think this was his second term. So, so he, he has put in some time and I want to say thank you to him. And, and, you know, anybody that volunteers for a city commission, you know, that's a, that's a step out and, and appreciate that. So. All right. Anyone else have a comment or a question on consent? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember O'Gra.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to approve consent discussion. Hearing seen not all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries 5-0. Action items. I wonder, Noel, if it'd be all right if we flip 9B and 9A. I know we have some members of the fire department. This is their training night. So I'm wondering if we could flip and do theirs first. You're probably doing both of them anyways, right?
Yes.
He's fine. He's gonna, he's gonna stand up there the whole time anyway.
Are you all right with that? So I know they want to get back to training. So appreciate if we could do so. Let's move to action item 9B.
Mayor and Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is one that you got to hear about at our work session at the last, or before the last council meeting, and it has to do with.
Mayor, did you want to do 9B right now? Which is establishing.
9B?
Yeah. Oh, I thought you were talking about tonight's work session. Sorry, Matt. I'm the confused one. I'm sorry.
Are you okay?
I'm okay.
How you got me confused? Let's do 9B.
Well, at least we have emergency personnel here.
Please proceed.
All right. So we, we, the council was able to, to hear about work that's being done on the Chaska Fire Department Relief Association, along with city staff, to really talk about how do we look at having a more defined policy in the future for how, how we should be funding this?
I gotta recuse myself.
Oh, yep, yep.
So I have to step down. You have to take over because I belong, I belong to this association. Association has just dawned on me. So I will be leaving.
Okay, bye.
You can say it right there.
Musical chairs.
So really looking for a more defined way to look at how we Fund Relief Association, fund benefit increases as we go into the future, what the proper funding level of that should be, and really create some, some more consistency in policy around that. So that as these decision-making points come up, that we have something that we can look back to as far as guidelines and policies that we created to help determine this. Just as a overview, so the Fire Department Relief Association is really, it's a way to basically provide benefit to our volunteer firefighters. So, you know, they, they put in anywhere between, you know, two to 20 years of service, you know, serving the, the community. And it's a way to, to be able to provide them with some benefit for the service that they provide to the community. And it's really a retirement benefit when they invest in the, the program. And, you know, our hope is not only is it something that we can thank, use as a thank you tool for the members of the, of our paid-on-call fire department, but also that we can hopefully use as a recruiting tool too, to be able to recruit more people to, to be part of it. Ultimately, and Tim and I, Chief Weeby and I talk about this quite a bit, is, you know, we have this goal of maintaining a, a paid-on-call system within our community. And that's becoming a lot more difficult with how busy people's lives are. And I think there's things that we can do with tools that we have to make it a lot more feasible for them to be able to serve their community, you know, through the fire department and be able to keep a volunteer-based department in, in our community. So this is sort of revolving around those goals and objectives. I'm going to turn it over to Noel, who's really gone through the technical aspects of this, along with the Fire Relief Association, to talk about what makes sense for a policy to, to be able to determine how we determine benefit increases and funding levels and things like that. So I'll turn it over to Noel. Jason Bun here too. So who is the, he is the president of the Fire Relief Association. He probably doesn't want to be, but he is the, he is the president and, and he's here representing that group.
Thank you, Matt. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Before you tonight is a resolution that will establish a policy for an understanding between both the Fire Relief Association of the Chaska Fire Department and the City of Chaska on how to fund the annual contributions that the city makes each year to that pension benefit program. There has been a resolution in place since 2002 that has provided a formula that they have, the city and the relief have used to quantify how much should be transferred to the pension benefit each year. And that was based on some original dollar amounts established in 2002 that have grown over time based on increases on a percent basis change in the market value of the city. So as the city has grown, contribution amounts have also grown. What has happened over time is that that funding formula doesn't really take into account what is the current funding status of that pension benefit. And that's important because any pension benefits that are paid by the Relief Association are an obligation of the City of Chaska. We are obligated to support that benefit. If there is no other resources available, it is a, a benefit that has to be levied by the city to provide that benefit. So once the benefits are established by the relief, they have to be approved by the city. And then the city has an obligation to provide for those benefits in the future. And there is even in state statute a requirement to levy for that if the resources are not sufficient to meet the minimum requirements of that pension benefit. So after several discussions between the trustees of the Fire Relief Association and the City of Chaska, including the Fire Chief Tim Weeby and Matt Poteraski, the city administrator, we began to sit a review, what was the original intent of the 2002 resolution? And in the proposed resolution tonight, in the first section of the resolution are 10 objectives that sort of came out of that original resolution, but they have also been updated to reflect some of the current needs of the city, the fire department and the Relief Association. Among those is that the pension benefit should strive to be 100% funded. And that if there are going to be any sort of benefit changes, the city would like to see that those changes are recommended by the Relief Association and their membership, so that they are in control of their pension benefits. What they will be recommending, if they make a recommendation on a benefit change, is looking at what are their current assets, what are their current pension liabilities? And that allows them to calculate what is their current funded status. So the original resolution objectives were restated. We've added others in there that address the importance to the city of recognizing that our financial resources are limited and do need to be used strategically, that we do want to provide for an opportunity to use the pension benefit. As Matt has said, to be a thank you to the members for their commitment and years of service, to be a tool that the city and the fire department can use to retain its current membership, and also as a recruitment tool as we go out to recruit new members to the fire department. So those original 10 objectives are sort of what the Relief Association and the city have agreed to. The second part of the resolution tonight begins to talk about what is the, the funding objective of the Relief Association. And after discussions back and forth, it was agreed that what we want to do is not bind the council or a future council. You have the opportunity and the obligation to review any benefit changes in the future. So as a part of the objectives that are stated in the resolution, it was agreed that if the Relief Association is going to recommend any sort of benefit changes, they would target that the funding ratio would not drop below 85%. And so the city has agreed that if that recommendation comes forward, the funding ratio as a result of those new benefits results in a ratio of 85% or higher, that the council would consider making that benefit change and put that in place on a permanent, ongoing basis into the future. The third point of that 85% is that the council has asked that the Relief Association not make a request for a benefit change that would result in a funding ratio of less than 85%. So that way the council has an understanding of what would be coming before them. And the Relief Association has an understanding of what would be acceptable to the city council. The 85% target sort of came out of some of the analysis that's done. Every two years, the Relief Association is required to do a funding actuarial report that looks at the total cost of any future benefits for the current membership, compares that to the current value of any assets that have been accumulated to pay for those future pension benefits, to come up with that funded ratio. So every two years, that evaluation is being done, that is reported on by the relief. It's also included in the city's financial report that is issued every year because it is a pension obligation of the city. So it is disclosed as one of our pension obligations. So there is constant review of the funding status of the pension benefit. The third section of the resolution before you then is what I like to refer to as sort of the guardrails. So that when a request for a benefit change comes forward, even if it's 85% funded or greater, there's still some other long-term considerations. there's still some other long-term considerations that need to be taken into account. What is the current trend of any funding contributions? What's the current market trends of any assets that are invested? What has been the result of any pension benefit changes? Are we still seeing an increase in the level of funding or is there going to downward trend? What we have seen, for example, in 2020, there was a lot of volatility in the, in the market. Uh, the last actuarial study was as of 12/31/2019. Um, there was a large, in approximately March and April of 2020, there was a significant decline in the market value of the investment portfolio. That was pretty much recovered by the end of 2020. So with that change in volatility, the board actually chose last year to not come forward with a recommendation for a benefit change. And as a part of that delay in discussions with the city, it came forward that we really started needed to move forward with an updated policy that would help guide the city and the relief on how to go forward with any future benefit changes. So that's what came forward in the proposed resolution tonight. The other component of this resolution is that it reflects some of the practices that the Relief Association has been working on since 2013. At that point in time, they implemented the lump sum benefit in addition to the monthly benefit that they already had in place. Um, right now, a retiree who takes the monthly benefit will receive that monthly payment until, once they qualify, are vested in the pension, reach retirement age, they receive that monthly benefit until they pass, and then that benefit would pass on to any of their survivors. Under the lump sum option, when someone retires, they're paid the cash upfront. And the benefit to the relief and the city is when that payment is made, the liability also comes off the books. So from a cost perspective, both benefit options cost the same. And that's part of what gets measured in the actuarial study every two years. So since the lump sum benefit was in place, about every two years, we've been, the Relief Association has been reviewing to see if it's financially viable to make a benefit change. And so we have seen that come through in two, two-year cycles. 2020 would have been the third year cycle, but because of what happened in COVID and the volatility in the market, they chose not to come forth with that recommended change. And that's what led to these discussions. To realize we needed to really sort of update this policy to reflect our current funding objectives and to be reflective of meeting the, um, funded ratio as a target instead of just a dollar amount that was currently in place. So this has been reviewed with the trustees who did approve in concept, the outline of the proposed policy that is in this new resolution. They approved that in April. We did review in a council work session with you, the proposed resolution to establish this revised funding, uh, resolution. This new resolution will rescind what was in place in 2002. Um, and then this will be what will guide us, the city and the relief going forward at this point. So the intent tonight would be to have council consider this resolution, which will then be, if it's approved, it'll then be go, we'll go back to the trustees so that they know that there's been agreement with the city. And I anticipate they will then be pursuing probably a benefit increase that they would like to complete this year, um, to sort of get back on their two-year schedule. And then they'll could take this into account with any, with any future benefit increases that they're considering. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions. I know Jason Button as president of the Relief Association is also here. If you had any questions that you would want to address to him regarding the proposed resolution to fund the fire relief.
I just had a clarifying question. Okay, so we have the payout over time, then the lump sum. Is it my understanding that payout over time is no longer an option for those that just invest, get vested, it's only lump sum. Am I, am I correct in that?
In 2013, anybody who had the monthly benefit as an option, when they added the lump sum, they had the option to choose when they retire monthly or lump sum. Any members who have joined the fire department and the Relief Association after that date have only the lump sum option going forward in the future. So over time, as the member, current membership retires, um, they will, they choose a monthly, they will continue to receive that benefit until they pass.
I just wanted to make sure I'm saying that correctly.
Any other questions? If not, I would ask that council consider, um, moving the passage of the resolution to establish the, uh, new funding policy between the city of Chaska and the Chaska Fire Relief Association.
Motion.
So moved?
All right, there's a motion by council member Wong, second by council member Hubbard, uh, to establish policy on Chaska Fire Department Relief Association Funding Resolution 2021-41. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Noel. You know, real quick before either Jason or, or Tim go, I don't know, Tim, from your perspective as fire chief, I don't know if you want to say anything in regards to what it means to have this type of system to be able to recruit and retain?
Thank you, Matt. Uh, Mayor, council members. Yeah, I think I, you know, during the work session, we kind of talked about how really the Relief Association and the pension is really a, a thank you and a tool to keep the paid-on-call model going. That is our goal. To keep that system in place here for the city of Chaska. And, uh, you know, I did express some concerns as this, this paid-on-call model evolution continues to change. Um, having a, a, a solid pension plan, attractive pension, uh, will be critical to keep this model moving in the future. As departments open up their radius where they can live to be on different departments in different cities, uh, it'll become even more important that the, the Chaska pension plan will become more of a strategic, uh, tool for recruitment. And what we're experiencing today is retention. So, um, we're experiencing the retention piece right now. Uh, I would say it's not as a recruitment tool today as it is retention, but the, the recruitment's going to be a critical moving forward in the future. So, uh, this is one step to continuing that successful plan. Um, and I would also say it's, it's also the relationship, I think, between the Relief Association, the city and the city council. That's really important to keep, uh, uh, that, that open relationship and honest relationship and having a successful plan moving forward.
I was just going to comment, something I picked up on the work session that never really dawned on me, and you just said it again, is the fact that you can volunteer to be on a fire, uh, team, fire, you know, for the fire department in a city that you don't live in, right? I, 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 it never really dawned on me. I guess probably largely because I grew up in smaller Minnesota towns where that probably wasn't a really viable option, right? But it just, I think, to say that again to make sure people hear that and understand that, because it is a retention tool. It's, we're competing against neighboring cities because it isn't automatic that, well, I live in Chaska, I'm living in the Chaska department. Um, well, something that I learned and I think resonated, as you said it again, because it is, it really then becomes a competition of retention.
I think we used the example of Eden Prairie and Eden Prairie Fire last time we met and how that, uh, residents of Chaska could join Eden Prairie, uh, with their radius. And they have a very large pension plan, uh, with a tenure vesting. So, uh, a- as, again, as this continues and radiuses open up, this will be more and more critical, uh, for Chaska to continue this.
I think, you know, first of all, it's a volunteer opportunity to, you know, keep people within the community and volunteering with their community. But from a financial aspect, it's a huge savings, uh, to, you know, if we had to go to a full-time fire department, it's a very different, it's a very different cost structure that we'd have for providing fire service than we do, uh, right now. And so anything we can do and, you know, we've been talking about small steps as we go through here, you know, retention through the, through the pension or duty crews to try to make things more predictable for, for people so that they can plan around their schedule. It's not just any time. All these little things are, just give people more reason to feel comfortable to say, yeah, I want to volunteer, but I also have a life too. And, you know, and, and so it's trying to recognize that i- if, if we want to keep that cost-effective model, we are going to have to invest something, but that investment's going to be significantly less than if we had to go to a full-time model.
All right, anything else for the chief?
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Thanks, Jason. Mayor Pro Tem, thanks for running that. Uh, again, just for, for the scribes of this, uh, if you didn't hear that, I had to step off because I am a member of that Relief Association. So that's why I had to recuse myself. So I just want to be clear. Um, all right, so I'm back and we will go to, uh, action item nine A, which is the 2020 annual financial reports. And we'll be right back to Noel again.
All right. Mayor, council members, uh, this is one that you saw it at, you know, Nate, this is the one we saw tonight.
This is what I've been looking forward to.
So, all right. Uh, this is, uh, each year, uh, we are required by the state to go through and have our financial, uh, uh, reports audited to make sure that we meet all compliance standards. And, uh, uh, we, uh, actually use MMKR. And we have Jackie here, uh, from there to, uh, uh, really go through and give the, the results of the, uh, our financial reports from not this year, but 2020. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Noel first, who can give a little introduction of this and then, uh, 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 go through and, uh, provide the report from MMKR.
Thank you, Matt. Mayor, council members. Um, we are here to go through the 2020 comprehensive annual financial report. Um, also here tonight is Kelly Grinnell. She is the finance manager. Um, she has led the team that has worked to, uh, work on pulling the audit and the financial report together, as well as Jackie Heigl, who is principal with MMKR. They are the audit firm that has been engaged by the council to review the financial records and then to issue audit findings and the audit opinion that is inserted in as a part of the financial report. The financial report, the comprehensive annual financial report is produced by the city. Those are statements that we generate. Um, so it is the city's work product that is presented that they issue their opinion on. Uh, in addition to that report, the auditors will issue their special purpose audit reports. This is what we see every year. It includes some of their reports on, uh, compliance findings at the state level. Um, in, in addition to the state findings this year, there was also the need to do a federal single audit. This is because the city received more than $750,000 in federal assistance. And when that, that's the threshold by which there has to be additional audit requirements satisfied by the auditor to report to the federal government on how those funds were used. And so that was, those additional requirements are included in that special purpose audit report. There is also a corrective action plan that's required as a part of the federal single audit. Um, but I'll tell you right now, the good news on that action plan is there were no findings from 2019 that needed to be addressed. And again, for 2020, we're going to hear that from Jackie later. Um, the final report that's before you then from the city is the management report. This is a summary report that looks at some of the operations and financial positions from 2020 and gives you a chance to take sort of an overview of where the city is at and also compares it to some state averages. Um, just to give us a better sense of our revenues and expenditures and how they compare to other entities. Uh, to give you a little sense of what the city's financial status or position is, is I like to sort of start off with just five basic numbers to give you a sense of scope here. Um, overall, the city's total expenditures in 2020 was 93.2 million. Last year, doing our percentages, it was easy because we were at 100 million. We're down about 6.8%. We're 6.8 million. And that's not unusual. Some of it's expected because of COVID expenditures were cut. Um, some of our capital expenditures were cut, but we also incurred additional costs because of COVID in our public safety, police and fire areas. Um, and then also the spending of our federal dollars through the CARES Act, which were incurred. So our total expenditures was $93.2 million. Our enterprise operations, which consists of our utility funds, electric, water, sewer, stormwater, our golf courses, our community center, this building here, the Curling and Event Center, they totaled 56.7 million. That's a 60% of our total expenditures. So our enterprise funds are a significant portion of what the city's total operations are. The electric fund is our largest fund. It's 43 million or 46% of our total operations. So being an electric utility is significant in our operations. It also provides a significant benefit to the general fund in the form of a transfer that's made from the electric fund to the general fund to help reduce our taxes, um, in our general fund. That general fund is actually at $18.5 million, about 19% of our total expenditures. So the general fund provides all of our general governmental services. Administration, police, fire, public works, snow plowing, park and rec services, our community development, our building inspections, all of those general services that are delivered. Um, that's about 20%, 19.6 of our total operations. The general fund includes a tax levy of about 6.9 million. It's about 7% of our expenditures are covered by taxes. So the tax levy is significant and we spend a lot of time in our budget process. Um, but I just want to give you a sense of reference. It's about 7% of our total operation. So when we're looking at other enterprise operations, uh, we are very attentive to what those revenues are, the rates that we charge for them, and are we covering our costs for delivering those services? Altogether, our levy lashed for 2020 was 10.5 million, which is about 11% of our total expenditures. So that includes some of our equipment replacement and our debt service that had to be levied, um, for like our street replacement program. So those five numbers sort of give you a sense of what is the size and scope of the city's operations. The comprehensive annual financial report in front of you really breaks down into three sections. Within, and each section is really focused on a different level of reader. There might be a general person from the public who wants an overview and they might be interested in the introductory section, which has a letter of transmittal. It provides an organizational chart of both the staff and the elected officials and appointed officials of the city and gives a first-time reader a general understanding of what the city's organization is and what its operations consist of. The primary section of the report, or section two, is the financial section. And this begins on page 11 through 13 where the auditor has inserted their opinion. Um, the opinion that was issued is an unmodified opinion. This is consistent with prior years. It's often referred to as a clean opinion, so there were no findings. Um, I'll let Jackie review how they came to that conclusion as a part of her presentation. But that is our goal as we prepare the oper- as we go through the year with our operations and then prepare for the audit, the financial report, is to obtain that unmodified opinion. Um, after the opinion, we get into the financial statements, our note disclosures, and then the management discussion and analysis, which begins on page 15. This provides a reader who wants to understand a little more detail without reading all of the, uh, accounting disclosure requirements. What are some of the analyses of the operations for the year, the financial position changes and where the financial positions ended at the end of the year? So if someone wants to start to understand the financial positions and operations of the city, I encourage them to review that management and discussion section. Then we get into the financial statements and the note disclosures that support those financial statements. Our two key funds, like I mentioned, is our general fund. That begins on page 34. We did see in our general fund, after we amended our budget in 2020 because of the COVID requirements, to reflect reduced revenues, reduced expenditures, and then some of the anticipated revenues from the CARES dollar and the associated expenditures. That amended budget compared to our actual costs resulted in a net gain of $21,000. So considering everything that we went through and how we had to basically rebuild our budget after six months to reflect the rest of the activity for the year, um, we actually finished with a positive fund balance, which is a good trend because as we were reviewing in 2019, as we were issuing our bonds that year, um, our bond rating agency, S&amp;P, did, um, advise that the city be attentive to its cash and fund balance position in the general fund. So having a positive fund balance gain is a good thing from 2020. Um, our unassigned fund balance did decrease about $317,000, finishing at $460,000. That's primarily due to some changes in our compensated absences as we did see additional leave time accrue during the year because of COVID. Um, and we do anticipate that it's going to be reduced as that time is liquidated this year, um, in 2021. Uh, the second fund that is of importance is our electric fund. It's our, uh, largest fund. Net assets, excuse me, net assets unrestricted in that fund ended at $5 million. It's a decrease of about $110,000. Um, that's primarily just due to some of our capital expenditures in that fund this year as well as, um, changes in the, um, we sold more electricity. we sold more electricity. And because we sold more electricity, some of our bond covenants require that we set aside additional dollars as restricted assets to ensure that we have reserves to repay the bondholders. And so that's what resulted in a net gain in the fund, but a decrease in our unrestricted cash because of those bond covenants. So it was not a surprise that that happened. When we saw the higher electric sales, we knew we were going to have to make that adjustment. The electric fund did make its contribution to the general fund of about $3.9 million. And that was consistent with what we had projected in our original budget to fund the operations in the general fund and to help offset some of our revenue losses in 2020. Page 43 are the notes, the financial statement. If someone wants to understand the detail behind the financial statements, these note disclosures get very detailed. They're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, as well as the disclosure requirements under GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They prescribe what has to be disclosed in terms of your assets, your liabilities, your activities such as revenues and expenditures. And it also explains some of the differences between our governmental funds, like the general fund, which use one form of accounting, versus our enterprise funds, which are more of your business entities that use a more traditional business type accounting. So they get, if you're looking to really try to understand from a financial analyst perspective, they start reviewing the notes and that's why we have those disclosures in the report. At this time, what I'm going to do is invite Jackie to come forward to present the audit findings from MMKR. And then I have some concluding remarks after that before we move forward with asking you to accept the reports. Jackie?
Thank you. As Noel said, my name is Jackie Heagle and I am the partner in charge of the audit as an independent auditor that we complete the audit annually. At the city workshop tonight, we did go through this presentation in more detail, had the opportunity to discuss some of the results of the audit. So the presentation right now will be a high level review of the results for the 2020 audit year. Let's go on to the next slide. This first slide discusses our role as auditors. As an independent auditor, we issue an opinion on the city's basic financial statements. It is the city's responsible for all the numbers and the information that is in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. During the current year, the 2020 audit year, the city did receive more than $750,000 in federal awards and spent those federal dollars. That is a threshold that triggers what's called a single audit, so a separate audit of the federal awards. The grant or the audit that was, the award that was audited this year was the Coronavirus Relief Funds. And then as part of our audit, we test the internal controls and the compliance over that financial statement audit with the federal single audit, as well as with Minnesota state laws and regulations. So each year, the Office of the State Auditor releases what's called the Legal Compliance Manual that has specific statutes that as auditors were required to test for. So we test those specific items that the OSA releases. And for the results of the audit, it was a very clean audit, a very good audit, as you're going to see here on these slides. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the city's basic financial statements. That is the opinion you were looking for as part of an audit. It is the top opinion you can receive. For the results over the internal controls over financial reporting, we had no findings to report. For the compliance over financial reporting, there was no findings to report. And the compliance audit with Minnesota state laws and regulations, there was no findings to report. Next slide then summarizes the results over that federal single audit. So that's the audit of those federal dollars, specifically the grant was the Coronavirus Relief Funds. As part of our audit, we reviewed that schedule of expenditures of federal awards. We noted that it was fairly stated in relation to the basic financial statements. As part of our testing with the internal controls over that federal compliance with the CRF dollars, we had no findings to report. And there's various compliance requirements that we test related with that grant, and we had no findings to report. So overall, a very clean audit. As you see, your corrective action plan is required to be included for the single audit, but you're seeing no findings to report for the year. As part of an audit, there is two parts to it. There's always the compliance and the internal control results of the audit. And then the second part of it is the actual financial results of the audit. So the slide you're seeing here is a table of the governmental funds and the changes in that fund balance from 2019 to 2020. The top part of this table here shows the classification of fund balance. So you're seeing the non-spendable dollars, the restricted, committed, assigned and unassigned dollars of all the governmental funds. But the bottom portion is splitting it out by the major funds of the city with the non-major funds combined. So overall, all the governmental funds of the city, you're seeing an increase of about 6.7 million in the fund balance and all those funds combined. If you're looking at the top part of that table, you're seeing majority of the increase was in the assigned and unassigned categories. And that correlates directly to the bottom portion, mainly in that Public Improvement Projects Fund. So you're seeing about an increase in assigned dollars of about 1.1 million, mainly the fund balance being assigned for various capital projects. And then the unassigned fund balance up just under 5 million. And a lot of that is due to some bonds that were issued in the current year for projects and costs that were in a previous fiscal year. So you're seeing that increase or the improved fund balance in that Public Improvement Project Fund. The next few slides I have summarize specifically with the general fund of the city, so the main operating fund of the city. This slide here summarizes the general fund financial position for the past five years. It shows the cash balance, the fund balance, as well, the line shows the revenue for the year. For the 2020 year, you're seeing the cash balance was about 2.4 million. A slight decrease of about 25,000 from the prior year. You're seeing the fund balance of the city ended the year at about 1.9 million. And that was a slight increase of about 21,000 from the prior year compared to a balanced budget that was approved by the council. And that 1.9 million in fund balance, it's split into different buckets. You're seeing about 970,000 of that that is committed for future compensated absences. Another 450,000 approximately is in assigned dollars for future compensated absences, which leaves the remaining about 460,000 in unassigned fund balance and the general fund at year end. The next slide then summarizes the general fund revenues of the city showing a budget to actual comparison by the various categories. The total general fund revenues for the 2020 year were about 14.5 million. About 105,000 over the final budget, so close to budgeted projections. Some of the areas you're seeing some variances. The license and permits were over budget, mainly just due to higher building activity more than anticipated. Your other revenue category was over budget due to some miscellaneous refunds and reimbursements received in the current year. And then you're seeing an offset there in the intergovernmental revenue categories of the general fund. About 120,000 under budget, mainly due to the school liaison program generating less revenue than expected resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. Next graph then summarizes the general fund expenditures, showing a graph of the budget to actual by the functions of the city. Total general fund expenditures were about 18.5 million for the 2020 year. About 205,000 higher than the final budget. The majority of that budget variance, if you're looking at the graph, you're seeing about, in the public safety function, function was about 230,000 over the final budget. A lot of that was just costs that resulted from the COVID pandemic, but a lot of it was funded with the CRF dollars that the city did receive. And then the last table I have here summarizes the enterprise funds changes in net position. So these are those business type activities of the city. Once again, the top part of this table shows it by classification of net position. So you're seeing that investment in capital assets, the restricted dollars and unrestricted. And then the bottom part of that table shows it by the major enterprise funds of the city with all the non-major funds combined. So the total net position in all the enterprise funds increased about 3.2 million when you're comparing 19 to 20. If you're looking at the top part of that table, you're seeing some swings there. The net investment in capital assets went up about 4.5 million. A lot of that is due to some capital infrastructure contributions from governmental activities into some of the enterprise proprietary funds. And then the unrestricted net position, you're seeing a decrease of about 1.7 million. A lot of that will correlate directly, if you're looking at the bottom half of that table, the city did see that decrease in the net position in the community center of about 2.2 million in the 2020 year. The other funds, as you're looking at the bottom portion of that table, all had positive, you know, net position increases in the net position when you're looking at your electric fund, your water fund, and the other funds of the city. So that was a quick summary of the results of the audit. Like I said, we did discuss it or have the opportunity to discuss it in more detail at the workshop tonight. But I can open it up if there are any questions that anyone has.
I think I'll just point out, like we did in the work session, you know, obviously the community center, Curling Center, because they were closed a majority of the, well, a good portion of the year, that we saw quite a bit of impact financially from that. But we are happy to see that with this next round of, of funding that's going to be coming through the federal government, we're going to be in line for about $3 million. Now, it's, it can't directly correlate to that, but it'll help us overall in our funds to be able to balance that out.
All right, well, it doesn't sound like they have any questions. And for people watching now, we've said this multiple times, but we had a work session. We went in a lot more in depth than this. And all of these are available online. And are you going to touch on that? Okay.
Yep, excuse me. Yeah, the report is being presented to council tonight. It's going to be published in the Herald this Thursday in a summary form. Anybody who would have an interest in this, it'll be also posted to the city's website. There is a history of prior year financial reports there as well. Someone wants to review the paper document, there will be a copy available in the Chaska Library as well as at Chaska City Hall. Contact myself or Kelly, and we'd be happy to answer any questions or help them get a copy of the report. One other piece I did want to note, in the report itself, on page, on page six and seven, and then on page eight, there is a certificate in there that's issued by the Government Finance Officers Association. This is a part of their Certificate of Achievement Program. Each year, the city submits our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to their program to be reviewed by GFOA, as well as two other outstate reviewers. The, the report that we produce meets the requirements under GAAP and GASB. And under GASB, you have to really provide the introductory section, the management discussion section, as well as the 10-year statistical section, which shows a lot of the trend information. The intent on this is to provide that information for analysts who are reviewing it for investments, bondholders. We oftentimes have bond rating agencies that are reviewing it, bond insurance companies who are reviewing it, and investors who are actually purchasing our bonds, either for their mutual funds, if they are representing a benefit or pension program, or an individual investor who's maybe buying on the retail level. So the objective here is to provide clear and consistent information to the public through the program. And so we submit to this program, we receive the award in 2019, which is the 31st year we've received that. And we anticipate we'll continue to receive this award. Across the country, there were only 4,340 certificates issued. And there's probably more than 52,000 entities that are eligible for this. That means in, excuse me, in the, excuse me. There's 4,4340 award certificates awarded across the nation. In Minnesota, there were 138 issued. So Chaska is one of those 138, and there's about 2,600 entities in the state of Minnesota. What this means is when a bond analyst picks up this report and they see this certificate, they know that it's been through this review by GFOA, as well as the outside reviewers. It also provides really good feedback to us as a staff to know what do we have to do as we work to interpret the changes that have to be incorporated into the report each year. So it's a very good resource for us internally as well. So the credit for that has to go to the finance department. Kelly leads, Kelly Grinnell, our Finance Manager, leads that group. This was only her second year with this full fiscal year with the city, but it was her third audit. And it was the second one that she had to pull together remotely. And so I think Jackie would speak to the fact that it has been very interesting going through our last two audits and completing the vast majority of the work remotely, both years. In addition, Lisa Nelson is our controller. She spends a lot of time support, supporting Kelly on the audit and the financial report, as well as our operations. The finance staff, who on a daily basis are managing a lot of our activity to maintain our records so that they're in a good position to be audited each year. And we couldn't do it without the other department heads across the city who run the operations. They work with us through the budget process to make sure that we're reflecting their needs, as well as the operations that are occurring, so that we can report on those. We do this under Matt's leadership, as well as the guidance and direction of the city council. So it's a real team effort to get this report and this audit completed each year. So I just want to acknowledge and thank everybody for your help in getting the process completed once again. Any other questions that we can address for you?
I just, I just want to say, you know, thank you. I know that looking at all these numbers is a lot and, and putting it all together. And to have no findings anywhere, that's, that's, you have to feel pretty good about that. So Kelly, thank you, and Lisa and Noel for getting us through all another audit, so and to have a good audit. So that's always important. So thank you for all your hard work and appreciate it, and hopefully it'll continue in the future.
Yes, the council considered the motion, accept the financial reports.
As Noel said. Anyone wanting to accept the 2020 Annual Financial Reports. Motion by Councilmember one.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grau to approve the financial reports. Discussion.
Nice work.
Pardon?
Nice work.
Nice work, yeah, exactly. Thank you, thank you. All right. In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you, thank you, Jackie. All right, we are moving on to Item 10, Bills. Anyone have a question?
Two quick ones. I'll see, page two, there's a 52, 52,800 rebate to ours, or is that a Arista? Or Arista, I always forget that, that name. It says, it just says may rebate custom. What was that?
So they did, so they used our electric rebate program for updates that they made to their mechanical system, which created energy savings. And so they were able to take advantage of some of our rebate programs for making those improvements.
B, there's, there's an MSA traffic count. I was wondering what was that applied for? Because, you know, MSA is, I guess, assuming it's a million standard axle measurement.
Oh, MSA is the municipal state aid. And so we have roads within our community that are under the municipal state aid program, which is an allocation of dollars that we get to be able to support some of our roads. And so each, I think it's each year, no, every few years, we have to go through a process of actually doing traffic counts on our MSA routes so that we can see how have traffic patterns changed and do they still meet those MSA requirements? Actually, just a note as we were sort of looking up this, a couple of them, this is sort of a COVID note. A couple of them that were way off was Fourth Street and Village Road. And you can imagine Fourth Street, because the courthouse was basically virtual for the entire year, and Village Road because of the impacts with the school being shut down so much. So we actually have to go back and redo accounts on those roads by the end of the year. But, but we, it's a requirement as part of the MSA program where we get allocations of dollars to help support those roads.
No, it's not something that would be obvious of like which roads would be MSA roads. I mean, it's because of
They tend to be our larger roads. There's, there are technical criteria that go into it, but I mean, you know, roads that, you know, you know, like Hunter Mark, which is, is not a county road, but it's a city road, but it's a main collector, would be an MSA road. So they tend to be, they tend to be road. So they tend to be, they tend to be those ones that are more collector routes within the the community.
Like Village Road was like, is also MSA, but it's not like, not really a collector road. So it's just.
It sort of acts as sort of a sub collector road because it connects all those uses within, within that area. But, you know, like, like your neighborhood street would not be an MSA road. So.
So last question is real quick is page 32. I just noticed that the provider was Exigent Solutions. And I remember, I don't remember, I remember there was like a different provider we used for a number of years or used for a while, but I don't remember Exigent being a.
Yeah. So they, so Exigent has been the manager as prior we've used for a while, but they no longer are no longer a sub entity under Northland Systems. So they, it's the same company that's done it, but they've gone through some changes as far as how they're structured.
So it's just, this was just like their renaming, their own corporate renaming. It's the same company. Yeah. Got it. Cool. Thank you.
I had one, just more out of curiosity, not so much with the cost. Page 32, Fireman's Park Beach Sand. Is that like added sand?
Every year.
Here we add sand.
Yeah.
Where does it go?
To the, to the lakes only five feet deep.
It gets shallower every year.
Yeah, I figured that's what it was, but I was just curious and it caught my attention there.
And and a lot of people home, cars, parking lots.
A lot in a little tiny bits.
Yeah, but every kid takes a little bit home with, and it all adds up.
I just, I have one. Page 19. It looks like it's a refund for a family membership to Saleen Mohammed. Just, I was just curious in regards to the amount there.
I remember I heard Tim pulling this up. What was the amount on there?
76590. I just, I was like, wow, that's a big refund. I mean, because an annual, an annual family membership.
Just the the membership. So it could be programs that they signed up for. So it could, so you might have somebody that's maybe in like, say, Trex and Trails, and and they might be in for a year along, you know, if they moved and now they don't have a membership for that.
That makes sense. I just thought, well, that's more than your regular family membership. So, all right.
Anyone else? Okay. If hearing none, is there anyone willing to make motion pay the bills? Motion by Councilmember one. Second by Councilmember Hubbard to pay the bills. Discussion. Eight, we call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard, Councilmember Wong, Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
And Mayor Winchell.
Aye. All right, moves us to other business. Councilmember Hatfield.
Just a couple of things. Farmers Market, looked like there was a ton of stuff I didn't get to go down. But based on pictures, there was a ton of options and things to get at the Farmers Market last week. So that's again, this week. And then I think it's our first music in the city square park this Friday, right? It's the first one. So.
It wasn't one last Friday, it went down.
Always fun to go down for that. Those were the two things I had.
Councilmember Gra.
Bouncing around here. I was just going to just remind the Chaska Pride Picnic Sunday, June 27 from four to second city square park, ice cream, food truck, live DJ, yard games, community yard project. And the one thing that I learned by looking this up again tonight, bring your own item to tie dye. So you're prepared for if you want to do tie dye. And so I'm excited. You know, I saw the article in the Herald, it is the first kind of pride event the city of Chaska has put on. And I'm very prideful of that, to use that word particularly. And I look forward for a good turnout. And I hope it's just kind of a, becomes a, you know, a reoccurring activity in the future. And that's all I have.
And I just want to say it's John Gra's birthday tonight. So thank you for spending time with us and not your family. You didn't bring any treats, so.
Say, where's our cupcakes?
Yeah, I didn't see anything. So.
Totally friendly. I would have had it individually wrapped. It's not July 1 yet.
Whatever, whatever, excuses. Happy birthday, John.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Wong.
Only a few things. Just want to congratulations on the city for receiving the Star Tribune hundred, top 175 workplaces recognition. That's a big deal. I know because the company I work for is actually number two in the same list. So.
All right.
So to make, I mean, to even be on that list is a really big deal. So there's a lot of, a lot of good things that are happening and a lot of, you know, really positive feedback that are coming from all across the organization to make that happen. Because I know that, you know, a lot of organizations strive for it and, you know, come in far, far lower. So it's to make that list is, that's a, that's a big deal. And I think it was actually one of the, it was the highest ranked government organization, if I recall, wasn't it? Because in different categories, it was one of the highest. Look, and I think we're one of two cities. The other government organization that I saw was, I think, the State Attorney General's Office. And I think they may have ranked just a little bit higher than us. But, but I think that just even kind of the big scheme of things, you know, it's, you know, if you look at other government organizations, it's, it's challenging to create a really positive culture in a government organization. So that's a big, big deal to be on that list. So I think it's a huge thing. So definitely a big shout out to you guys.
You know, one thing I'll mention about that, I mean, the reason we started to do that program, I mean, it's, it's great to be a part of that group because it does help with like recruiting and things like that. But to me, the more important part of that program is that we have a consistent tool that we can use each year to be able to measure, what they're really measuring is how engaged employees are in, within the workplace, and what are those things that maybe really bug them, or things that they really like. And so it gives us some measurable things and a consistent way to measure that, to be able to look back year from year. Okay, this year, we may have heard this come out. And it gives us something to say, well, there's either an area we need to improve or work to improve on, or an area that, boy, let's not change that because that seems to be working really well. So, you know, it's great to be a part of the program. But to me, the best benefit of that program is, is just the ability to have this measurement tool. I think we had over 90%, over 90%, 90% participation in, from our employees across the organization, which is fantastic. So.
I think you even have to have what 75% even be qualified in it to even be, you know, considered at all. So, yeah, so we get 90%, 90% of people to do anything. That's a pretty big deal. That's pretty awesome.
You know, you guys were like, you can't leave your computer until you fill this out, right?
We said that David Hasselhoff would, would, would come and visit the organization if everybody filled it out.
Network.
Yeah.
Sweet. You know, like also looking forward to the Farmers Market next, of course, you know, it's going to be all through the summer. So I think the first one's next Wednesday. And.
First one was last.
Last Wednesday was the first.
It was, it was there. I was there. It was really actually pretty busy. I had three.
Yep. So I'm looking forward to be able to make one of these. And last thing I have is that, is like, we all heard that the state fair is officially back on. And also as part of that, Southwest Transit will be offering state fair service again this year. So, so that's actually, so we're, we're, I guess you could say we're back in the bus. So the buses going to the fair. So looking forward to that. And of course, and for, for those of you Twins fans, we're also offering twin service. Be better if they actually were winning, but we can't fix that.
Or a four game win.
Or a row.
You gotta stay up on topic there.
Maybe your, my own tournaments.
Better when they're winning. So that's all I got.
It's up to you.
Yes. So first, I just have one, two things, maybe. One, the SPM, Master Plan Steering Committee met this last week. I watched it later because I was having some technical difficulties and had to tap out of the meeting. But I just want to say that a few meetings ago, I had mentioned this and said that the goal was 1,000 survey respondents. And our fellow council member Hatfield said that we would never get there.
I did not say that. I would ride my bike into the lake.
That we wouldn't get there by implying that if we did reach it, she would put her bike into the clay hole.
Ride it into.
Ride it in. And I guess what?
Start building that ramp.
But yeah, we're gonna start building that, Patfield, because we have 1,064 respondents on that survey.
It's gonna be an evil con evil type thing going on.
So amazing. I have a flat tire. So.
What else you got?
I want to line this up officially.
Yes.
And put this on the record. And it better hit the minutes. So anyways, 1,064 respondents.
That's actually really great, though. I would like to take a little credit because I'm sure people just wanted to see me, right? I'm just kidding. Wow. No, but I would like to take.
His right hand, pat back.
I would like to just thank the community for taking the time to engage that website, whether it was filling out the survey, doing the WikiMap, doing both. This didn't even, this didn't count even the people that just went to the site. These were the actual survey participants. So, and from that, there was a lot of data that was gained. And there is the, the meeting is on the website. If you go to bikewatchchaska.org and go under the steering committee, you can watch the meeting and watch the breakdown of the survey. And I think one of the takeaways from it was that 10% of people walk or bike to school or work in our community. And that is a way bigger number than I would have ever have figured. And one of the other kind of takeaways that is pretty more obvious is one of the barriers is the snow removal in the winter time to, to being able to use the trails. But it really breaks it down nicely. So I just, I won't go through all the details here, but I just wanted to kind of bring that up. And then this is the last thing with that. So they're going to have some pop up events now, now that the survey tools are closed. Now it's about engaging the community members in certain events that are coming up. So we're narrowing the list of those events. And then also just if there are maybe bigger industries or bigger, bigger groups that, that aren't being kind of represented, engaging those. So one of the things that was kind of obvious from the survey, just with the last couple of questions in regards to just ages, the, the youth population is not being engaged in the survey. And so trying to find ways to engage the youth perspective, and then households making under 50,000, and then also just more diverse race and ethnicity households. So finding those kind of ways to engage the segments of our community that represent those groups would be really important to have a really well rounded snapshot to kind of move forward. Did I miss anything on that at all? Yeah. So go to walkbikechaska.org, and then you click on the menu bar, the Project Steering Committee. You'll see the YouTube video that's just right there. You just click on it. It's really great information. Antonio does a very nice job breaking things down. So, and yes, you can definitely get confirmation of that number because it's in there. I'm not just making it up. But no, so that, that's pretty much my main thing. Otherwise, you had mentioned it, Councilmember Gra about the Pride Picnic. I think one thing I just like want to piggyback on that is that I know that many of us are going to be there and some of our other mission members, but I really hope that we extend an invitation to our police and to our fire crew. Because it would be really nice to see some of our city departments there and kind of engaging with some of our community members. So, and that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Evan.
You did leave out the city of Eden Prairie in the top 175.
We don't count them.
Yeah, top 175, we were 54th in midsize, they were 55th. And the state attorney's, general attorney, or attorney general's office was 51.
Wow.
Why aren't we listed as municipal and Eden Prairie is listed as local government?
I see right there.
Isn't that weird?
Oh, we're all listed in government and ownership.
That's true.
Sourcewell was seven.
Was seven?
Sourcewell.
Sourcewell, okay. All right. Anything else?
Oh, I guess the only other thing I could mention is that part of those responses were partial responses on the surveys. So if you count the partial responses on the surveys, we got to the.
He said that there were individual, unique participation.
I just, you know, that's, that's one, I guess.
Kevin's like the king of footnotes tonight.
Drive her bike into the clay hole.
Video. I mean, I still think it counts.
Exit to.
Channel 11 there, I think.
I know. Channel 11, wow. That's escalating.
It's worth it just to promote biking in Chaska.
I think so, too. We could use it to kick off our TikTok account.
I would, I would start a TikTok account just for that.
I would start a TikTok, TikTok account for that.
All right. Luki, anything?
I think Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Tracy, congratulations. Thank you for everything. I'm sure you want to come up and speak now.
Is that the recording on?
No. If you do, you have to come up here so we can hear you. You don't have to, but I've just given you, this is your day. There's, there's.
Coming up here, one fact related to biking. I don't know if I'm on, but my bike up until like two years ago was Tracy's bike from college. So I think I sold it, by the way.
It was a chartreuse green.
Yes, that was my favorite. I earned it by babysitting. So fun facts about biking and Tracy.
Tracy is retiring from our police department. End of the month, correct? So.
But anyway, I just want to tell everyone, thank you. It's been a great career, and I couldn't have done it without the city and the department and the community. And I really hope that some of the families in town that I've helped with along the way, you know, I was able to make a difference. So thank you, everyone.
You did. So congratulations. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Nate, anything?
Just want one note. I want to make sure everyone is aware that we can, and I can confirm, we will have fireworks this 4th of July. I know some communities ran into some supply issues. We are not one of them because we hop on it early. So don't want to see that. So that will be at.
Storage of fireworks?
Yes. Yep. Yep. So.
Chaska, though.
Have the fireworks.
Local departments.
Yeah. They might be, they might be cones, but.
Get really close to where they light them.
Yeah.
Barefoot off the ground.
On the platform.
Kevin, get your video stuff ready.
Yeah, I'm from Wisconsin, so I can get the good stuff. But yeah, it'll be, you know, after dusk at McKnight, at McKnight Park at our typical 4th of July firework location. So.
All right. Anything else?
That's what I've got.
I just want to give a kudos out to our water department. The, Matt gave me these statistics. So with the hot weather so far this month, we had seven days over 7 million gallons. The highest was 7.36 or 376 million gallons, which was on June 16. We averaged 2.5 million gallons in non-irrigating months. And in Matt's time in the department, which goes back to July 2007, we've only eclipsed 7 million gallons one other time. So, and that was before we implemented the incline block rate of, of water. So I guess the real message is, we used a lot of water. And, you know, there was a lot of cities around that needed to, to go to watering bans. We didn't. I can tell you for sure that the reason we didn't was because of the staff that were able to keep the equipment going. We talked about this during the last budget process that, you know, our well number seven, which is up behind Cub Foods, is not hooked up to our water treatment plant. And so that's why we need to put a smaller water treatment plant up there. You know, but for being able to keep that equipment going and maintain the way it was, we could have easily run into a very similar situation to what other cities did. So they worked their butts off. They did a really great job. And I just, that is one department that just never gets any recognition because people just expect their water to, to turn on when they turn, you know, when they flip the faucet and. And i- it's just amazing what they were able to accomplish over that two-week period. Thanks to them.
But more importantly, it's the preventative maintenance.
Yes.
You would have had a well go down, any, any one well go down, we would have been in the same situation. Many of our uh neighboring cities would have been. So that's just as important as anything is that preventative maintenance to make sure that our wells are always operating. So, so I agree. Kudos to the water department. So.
I had neighbors actually, you know, say, you know, ask me about like, you know, why we're having a water emergency in Chaska. And then that, I mean, who eventually kind of poked around is like, they kept seeing city of Carver said theirs, but they were, thought it was Carver County.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I had, I had other people say that too. Well, Carver County's got a water ban. Somebody said, Carver County's got nothing to do with water. So but yeah, Victoria had a ban. Uh I, I, I'm not sure, but I just knew those two did from seeing signs. So. All right, anything else, Matt?
Oh, just a reminder, our next meeting on the twelfth.
Night to night is also back.
City Hall.
Night to night is also back. So um start planning your uh block parties and get togethers because it's August. Anybody know? August third.
Really? These are like the seventh, third, third, okay.
First Tuesday of the month, I believe. So, so that's coming back. Uh I as well had the fireworks are on. And we don't have a shortage of fireworks, I heard. Uh happy Fourth of July to everyone. We will not be back before that. So um uh I see that are, and people are probably gonna start wondering, they're moving dirt in the Hy-Vee site, but that's not for Hy-Vee.
Yeah, they're, they're starting on the south side now, which is at Opedin uh site.
Places.
Oh, are they moving it both? Okay.
There, it's really weird that they planted that field because they were scraping the beans up today.
I asked the same thing. I, it seemed weird to me too.
But they're, they're scraping the black dirt off and they're starting to scratch around. So but that's just all part of the south end where they have to move a bunch of that dirt before we can finish that road. So I just want everyone to be clear. No, we don't have anything more from Hy-Vee. And it's just about preparing the site for somebody to use it, whatever it might be. So um we had some vandalism out here to this monument. It really kind of makes me sad that someone would, I mean, they really had to work to break that thick piece of Plexiglas. So I mean, obviously, they were attempting to do damage. Fortunately, uh PD or staff, someone was able to um catch the person that did it. So hopefully we can get some restitution out of it anyways and just to show that we are monitoring our parks. And it's just sad when we have such a beautiful facility and people just somehow think that they should break it, wreck it, destroy it, whatever it is. So it's just, it's a sad thing. And now we're gonna have to go out and, and try to fix it up and make it the same again. So just creates a lot of work for other people uh on, on stuff like that. So.
I don't know if anybody noticed. I mean, I even saw it while we were sitting here tonight. Um we do have our officers that in the evenings are doing walking patrols through the uh the park. And you know, I happened to run into a couple of them a couple of Friday nights ago. And um you know, obviously, we're doing it to protect our assets. But I, what I thought was even greater was there's all these kids and stuff that they're able to interact with and have Freezy Pops with and all that kind of stuff. So I think, I think even though, you know, we're, we're putting it out there to, you know, to help, you know, quell any of negative activity that's occurring, I think it's having a real positive impact on connecting people too.
All right, all right. Uh then lastly, uh we kind of touched on already, our next meeting is July twelfth because of the Fourth of the July holiday. And we will be back at City Hall. So we will no longer uh be here. And hopefully, as nice as this facility is, I hope we'd never have to come back. And I, I want to give a special shout out to, to Kevin. Um that has to come here prior and you can't see all the cables that he's got stretched out here. And every night he takes it down and all the computer stuff. So uh we would not be able to be talking to you tonight if it wasn't for all the work that Kevin has to do prior to the meeting and every night after the meeting. So big shout out to Kevin Wright, our communications manager. So thank you, Kevin, for keeping us uh, keeping us connected. So that.
Kevin, uh more so, even more than these meetings, Kevin has been so critical to keeping our whole organization connected throughout the whole pandemic. So huge kudos to you.
He makes sure there's, before we got a flag here, he, I'd see him waltzing down Pine Street, carrying the American flag, getting them, getting them down here for the meeting. So uh but thank you.
Mikayla bikes into the water too.
But thank you, Kevin, seriously, for everything that you've done to make this work. And probably now we'll go back to City Hall and have the work. I have all the confidence in the world, but you never know. So um uh that's everything I have. Uh just last call. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Congratulations, Tracy. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We are adjourned. Have a good night. Happy Fourth of July.